Clock is slow. Well, it is 7:01 on the November 22nd. And this is the 1,771st meeting of the College Place City Council. I want to call the meeting to order. Mr. Cleveland, would you please provide your prayer and our closing prayers?
Dear Lord, we ask that you watch over our country and our city. It is a time of change and transition in America, but I trust that as we move forward, we will continue to be a compassionate country full of good, hard-working people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now our time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address.
I'm Ms. Sandy Diallo. My address is 807 South College Avenue.
Ms. Diallo, would you step more closer to the microphone?
Hold the mic down here.
There we go. Because we're recording for posterity.
Great. My name is Sandy Diallo, and my mailing address is 807 South College Avenue here in College Place. I just -- I'm going to read what I have to say if that's okay. So my husband Tim and I own the corner property at 803 and 807 College Avenue. That includes the Lemon Tree Hair Salon. And I have several issues that I want to address that deal with the College Place cars project. The first is the storm drain on 8th next to my house at 803. The original drain was on the corner of 8th and College Avenue. It has been moved approximately 15 to 20 feet east of the original spot to within 6 feet from the basement window of my house. In the event that that drain should flood and overflow, it could ultimately flood the basement of my house. And I observe the placement of the storm drains on many of the other streets in College Place, and they are all corner drains. I am requesting a letter of liability from the city saying that they would take full responsibility for the flooding if that should ever occur. Secondly, the left-hand turn lane at the corner of 8th and College Avenue in front of the Lemon Tree has caused hardship for my senior clients that disabled in a handicap that comes to my salon. A lot of them need easy access to the salon. Many use walkers, wheelchairs. Some of them have difficulty walking, and some arrive in assisted living buses or dollar rides. And I wonder where they're supposed to unload these clients. We were told -- we were given a message on our answering machine from Robert Gordon stating that we would have at least one parking spot in front of the salon for loading and unloading. And we took him at his word, but we have no parking. And we have not provided that, and I'm asking why that wasn't given to me. There's limited parking from 6:00 to 10:00. What about homeowners that have more than one car per household where they're supposed to park? There's parking on the south end and the north end of College Avenue. And I feel like for some reason we've been targeted and we've lost our parking. I also feel like you devalued my property by not allowing me to have parking in front of my business. I don't even need a front door anymore. And I've been in business here for over 40 years. I am taking it as an attempt to close much my door. Thirdly, College Avenue and 8th intersection, I feel is unsafe. The striking on 8th Street is step back so far that you need to enter the crosswalk before you can see if traffic is coming from either north or south College Avenue. The convenience store has a disabled parking spot right next to the street, and a person exiting from their vehicle forces the possibility of being hit as cars turn onto 8th or approach College Avenue. The speed is set at 30 miles an hour, and we all know that most people drive faster than 30 miles an hour down College Avenue. I am requesting a feeling that you remove the left-hand turn lane that you stated in some of your minutes that were put there for safety reasons. There's virtually no traffic turning onto 8th Street. The 30 mile an hour speed limit, I feel, is far too fast, and most vehicles need to approach the turn by crossing into the other lane. I'm wondering whose safety that you are concerned about. The sidewalks have been widened, and I'm wondering also, who is going to keep them free from snow lands, particularly the elderly people that live on College Avenue? Please reconsider my parking. I am going to bring -- I'm going to give you a partial list of clients that come to the Lemon Tree Hair Salon that find that the parking is unsafe, that the College Avenue between 6:00 and 10:00 is unsafe and very inconvenient for residences -- for residents and businesses. Thank you. This is my list of clients.
Thank you, Ms. Diallo. Any questions for Ms. Diallo from the council? If anyone else wishing to address the College Place City Council, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, before you lose the consent agenda item, I would like to amend item one. That is, I would like to remove the presentation on Complete Streets Municipal Code Preview as our agenda is quite lengthy this evening, and this is not a time-sensitive issue. We will do that at a future council meeting, hopefully before the first of the year, but certainly --
27.
Presentation number one.
Okay.
Other than that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Myhagan. Is there a second?
Second. Jared got the first.
Second by Councilmember Bobbin. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Passes unanimously. Ms. Philgore, the floor is yours.
How very exciting. I hope that you guys aren't bored to tears tonight. I am going to be presenting your preliminary budget for 2017, and then we will open for a public hearing for public comment. So, someone hit the lights, please.
Before Ms. Philgore gets started, due to some staffing issues, this is rather delayed, but I think we're on track to get this done in appropriate time and make sure we get this done. I think we're on target and ready to go.
Yeah.
Sarah's worked very hard, given the limitations of availability to be here.
Thank you, Harvey. Yeah, I'm presenting preliminary tonight, and we have a finance committee meeting scheduled for December 2nd. And then I'll present the final budget at the December 13th meeting, I believe it is. And depending on where you guys are at that time, we can adopt, or we can push it out further into December if there are still questions and things you're not comfortable with. So, that's kind of the remaining timeframe that we have laid out right now. Okay, just going to go ahead and jump right in here. So, this year has quite a few new things that we really tried to focus on as far as looking more towards the future, trying to plan for the future and for sustainability financially. One of those is that this year I started working on a set of proposed fiscal policies for the city. So, there'll be a set of formal financial policies that encompass everything from, you know, reserve funding to capitalization of assets, to policies for utility funds, just kind of a broad spectrum of financial topics that I will be bringing back to you guys in the coming months for vetting and approval and whatnot. So, what I've tried to do with this budget is start implementing those ideas so that should we come to the point where you adopt those formally in the coming months, our budget is actually already set up to fall in line with them. So, some of the items that I've tried to get into this budget from the financial policies are minimum ending fund balances. So, I've taken a really hard look at fund balances, particularly in our operating type funds, so current expense, the water utility, the wastewater utility, the street fund. So, funds like that that have regularly recurring expenses and revenues that should really have a cushion in them in case there's a lapse in revenue stream for some reason. I've taken a really hard look at those ending fund balances and established some rough policies at this point as to what I think we should maintain in those funds, and made sure that the minimum ending fund balances are met for the budget. Another item that I've tried to proceed with is making sure that we have a clear delineation between what are our operating expenses and what are our capital expenses, because one are recurring and one are not -- is not. So, I've tried to segregate those. I've tried to pull most of our capital projects and equipment purchases out of operating funds and put them in specific capital funds this year. So, you'll see that. And along with that, I've tried to identify more dedicated funding sources for those capital items that have been pulled out into separate funds. Also, I did a lot of in-depth analysis of our recurring costs. So, what are our recurring operating costs versus our non-recurring operating costs? So, what are the ones that are going to perpetually happen no matter what? I wanted to make sure that our recurring revenues more than cover those recurring expenses.
Councilmember, please.
The separation of capital and operating, this is new for 2017?
Yeah, in the past, like, take our street fund, for example. We've operated our street fund maintenance in that fund, but we've also budgeted capital projects in that fund. This year, I pulled, for instance, in that situation, I've pulled all the capital projects out and put them in a specific street capital fund so that tracking purposes -- for tracking purposes, it's much easier for especially tracking funding source, like, if we have grant funding that comes in for those projects, it's really easy to track those and to see project beginning and completion versus blowing up our street fund budget in a certain year because we had a big project. So, this will stabilize our annual budgets from year to year in those operating funds because they won't be blown up or shrunk depending on if we have a big project scheduled for that year or not.
I really support that. In that respect also, capital funds do not necessarily mask an operating expense issue practice.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Another item that we've put a lot of work into this year has been an equipment replacement program. So, this is basically taking a list of our large expensive capital equipment items, depreciating them over time, and coming up with a funding of depreciation on an annual basis. That program has been started in a specific fund that's new this year in the budget, Fund 320. And we'll get further into this in detail as I go through the budget, but it's definitely a new thing this year. Another item that I'm bringing forward in the budget is the possibility of adopting REIT II for our city, which would be an additional funding source for street-related capital projects, park projects. Most of the products, I believe, that are on our capital facilities plan and be eligible for this funding. So, you'll see that as we go through the budget as well. Okay, overview. We're looking at starting the year with about $8.3 million. Revenues projected to be about $21.2 million, with expenditures at about $22.2 million. So, that's a net spend down of about a million. And an ending fund balance is projected at $7.3 million. Now, starting at the beginning with our current expense fund. Now, just as a reminder, the current expense fund is our basic operating fund of the city. It encompasses all of our general services, public safety, administration, planning, building department, parks. This fund houses most of our essential city services. So, the total budget for this fund is looking at approximately $7.3 million. When you break it down into the recurring revenues and recurring expenditures, we have a positive, albeit small positive, but our recurring revenues do exceed recurring expenditures. Here's that financial policy that I alluded to about ending fund balance. My recommendation at this point for an ending fund balance in this fund would be, and this is something that Harvey has had a lot of been put onto, is 20% of our recurring revenues should be left in the fund at the end of the year as a cushion. And that would come out to $984,000, and we are budgeted to have $1.5 million in there. So, we are well exceeding that minimum fund balance that's recommended. Just a kind of a big picture look, and that's funny that all of those got all garbled in here. I apologize. I think in your slides you can read them. Yes, you can. You want to turn to your slides. This is just a big picture look at revenues for this fund. You can see that we rely very heavily on taxes for this fund's budget. $4.3 million or about 85% of the budget is from taxes. That consists of property taxes, retail sales tax, utility tax, BNO tax. Comes from a multitude of places. Everything else is fairly small. I mean, the next largest funding source is licenses and permits at about 5%. And you can see state entitlement funding is a little over 4%. So, and it goes down from there.
If I could just ask a quick question regarding the 20% kind of cushion, what sort of, I guess, methods did you use to determine that number? Like, what?
I looked at financial policies from a number of other cities in the state. I looked at sample policies from probably half a dozen other cities that are similar in size to ours. And that was actually a more conservative fund balance. Most of them started at about 10%, 10% to 15%. So, 20% is actually a very conservative policy amount.
I was just thinking that if, you know, we had a pretty big crash in '08, and that probably would have reduced quite a bit of income tax for the city, so.
Yeah. I think it's a pretty safe place to start. And I mean, we can always, over time, work towards more, but I think it's a pretty comfortable place to start.
And Sarah, last year's ending fund balance was a little over $2 million?
I believe so, but I can't.
That's, yeah, it was --
I'm sorry.
No, it's in the neighborhood. So, we're --
We are spending down a little bit.
Trying to get an ending fund balance that's safe and reasonable and still be able to support the functions of the city. And we didn't go all the way to 20% because of the -- you'll see some things, especially on equipment replacement and some other funds that we're trying to coast down so those funds can build up. And I didn't want to go get totally well very fast, and this was a really comfortable --
It left a good cushion in there for uses in the subsequent years if we need to use them. So, I think that's what you were trying to say.
Yes.
Okay. Here's a look at --
Councilmember Pedersen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, this cushion is earmarked into a fund that's not touched?
It's -- it is a minimum amount that we want to retain in that fund no matter what. So, come hell or high water, we don't want to go below that 20%, which was the $984,000.
Right, right.
We're budgeted to have much more than that in the fund at the end of the year at $1.5 million.
Things happen, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have a really considerable cushion there. We don't want to spend that. We're not budgeting to spend to that cushion, but --
Because we're planning on spending it another, as we go out years, actually.
We're planning to spend it over the next few years on capital reinvestment is where we're figuring it's probably going to go.
So, it's earmarked. Six months from now, we can look at that account and see what's in there. And obviously, by vote, that number could be adjusted or used or --
If you, the only, yes, yes. Council can authorize utilization of that expenditure amount if you so choose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Pedersen.
You're talking about a separate fund other than the current expense fund?
Well, yeah, that was my question because I'm hoping, I guess my point was that this is not spread out amongst lots of funds.
No.
But this is something that you could, you could check.
You don't have a separate fund for it?
No, it's actually all contained within one account. It's kind of like retained earnings.
It's just a cushion for the ending balance.
It's basically where --
It's a keynote of, it's a balance.
Yeah, it's a carryover.
Only, it's only in that fund, not eligible to be robbed by other funds unless we need to, and you guys approve.
It's basically the same thing as retained earnings on a regular set of financials.
Right, right, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, here is a pie chart of where the current expense fund expenditures are earmarked. So, you can see, as always, our largest cost centers in the current expense fund are police and fire EMS. Together, they're about $2.5 million, or about 43% of the budget. So, that's where the majority of our tax money goes, is to support public safety. I shouldn't say the majority, it's 43% of the fund. The other large chunk of the current expense fund is this inter-fund transfers at almost 22% or about $1.2 million. These are transfers out of the current expense fund to other fund budgets in the city. Current expense supports a lot of other activities besides just what are contained within current expense. So, these transfers consist of transfers for debt service, large transfer to the street fund for street maintenance operations, transfers for that equipment replacement program that I spoke of on the opening slide. And we'll get into all of those in future slides here.
What is 405?
Fund 405 was the appointment keeper's transportation.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that one's gone, right?
That's basically gone, yeah. There's one transfer budgeted in it back to current expenses here, but then it will be closed. Okay, just to go through a list of notable items in the current expense budget, we have put in the budget, oops, I'm accidentally, there we go, $50,000 to be used for economic development services so that we'll be hiring a third-party consultant to come in and assist our staff in basically advertising our city to the nation and world for recruitment of retail and other economic growth activities. We have budgeted donations to a few other organizations. These are organizations that have come to you guys over the past year or two and requested support. So, we went ahead and put in $5,000 to share with the Walla Walla Valley Teen Center, if you recall that presentation. We've put in $5,000 this year toward the World War II Veterans Memorial over at Fort Walla Walla Park. That is the first of two concurrent donations, so we'll have to do one in 2017 and one in 2018 to total a $10,000 that they asked for. And then, we've also put in a $12,500 donation to the City of Walla Walla Swimming Pool so that our citizens can swim there. They asked for $50,000, and we decided that we would try to do that over the course of four years, so it's not a significant impact to each annual budget, but we're doing our part. Harvey, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Ella, and I think that goes along with contributions from the port and the county that are being provided over that four-year window.
Then I'd like to talk a little bit about FTEs. This is kind of a newer, I haven't talked about FTEs in our budget presentation in the past, but I wanted you guys to see what's going on. We've budgeted 27 and a quarter FTEs for this fund for the year. We actually have 29 FTEs working this year, and we had 31.25 requested. We just, we cannot fund all of the FTEs that were requested and have a sustainable balance between what are recurring revenues and what are recurring expenses that we can support them with. So, for 2017, FTEs are at 27.25. Equipment replacement program transfers, I told you there was a large chunk of that inter-fund transfer piece of the pie that's going to the replacement program. That total for the current expense fund for 2017 is $216,000, and that's spread $136,000 for fire EMS replacement, $47,000 for police replacements, $23,000 for building inspection and travel vehicles, and then $10,000 for our parks' equipment. And these consist of an annual recurring amount that will happen every year, but they also contain a little bit extra in these first few years to catch up, so to speak, because we didn't start this program maybe back, I mean, we're just now starting it. So, we have equipment that may have a 10-year life, but it's on schedule to be replaced in four years. So, we're trying to make up that difference in these first few years so that by the time we need to replace that vehicle, it's fully funded in this fund, and we're not having to borrow money or, you know, script and, you know, sacrifice something else in on an emergency-type basis, but, so we have money saved for it. Okay, and one other item here is that information technology originally was always housed in our current expense fund, but it's become a substantial part of our budget. And a few years ago, we implemented an information technology sub-fund of the current expense where we have set aside money to save for IT investment. What I've done this year is actually moved everything IT-related into that sub-fund so that it's all in one place, it's easy to see what the budget's doing, and it's not spread between two different funds.
Including salaries?
Including salary, partial salary for Mr. Bowman, who's our IT manager. Okay, speaking of -- Okay, speaking of technology reserve, it is the next fund in sequence. So like I said, I've consolidated all of the IT budget into this fund for 2017. This fund is completely funded by transfers from current expense. Basically, it's budgeted so that transfers in will match operating costs. And then we've also budgeted an additional $50,000 transfer to help build the capital reserve balance in this fund for future investment in IT needs. We have a number of them that we're looking at for the next few years that we need to make sure we plan for. So one other small item that might be kind of exciting is that we have budgeted for a new website in this fund. Our website, as you may know, is not the easiest to navigate or find things on. It's quite difficult for staff to work with, so we are looking at replacing that with something much more user-friendly for both staff and the community to use. Also, as a recruitment tool for that retail aspect that we're trying to bring in. And the next fund in sequence is the Employee Benefit Reserve Fund. This is a fund that was set up a few years ago to provide for post-employment benefits. We have a significant liability for compensated absences on our financial statements. At the end of 2015, it was $363,000. This fund was originally set up to try to fund that liability. It was an unfunded liability on our financial statements. This fund was set up to provide for that. In addition, we have medical insurance premiums and medical expense reimbursements for our left-wing retiree that will continue, we will be responsible as a city for those payments for the rest of his life. They will come out of this fund. This fund is set up to provide for that. One thing that kind of surfaced this last year is that we have some employees that have fairly significant over accruals of vacation time. We are working with those stuff to reduce those accruals down to our policy maximum, but the balances are significant enough that we are probably going to need to be paying out some lump sums. I've budgeted $25,000 in this fund for 2017 to pay down those accrual amounts to reduce that liability to the city. This would be, in order to have approval for this, I just, I need to make sure that council's aware that that is something they're approving with this budget. This isn't a listed use of this fund, but the actual fund ordinance allows council to do things such as this with special approval. So I'm proposing in this budget that you also approve a payout to reduce that liability from this fund next year. Larry?
Noticing the inter-fund transfers into this fund, explain why it was $100,000 last, or two years ago when the average was 40 to 50.
We just had a little bit of extra money we felt like we could put towards it and help beef up the fund balance that.
So you're just trying to keep ahead of?
Yeah, we were just, we felt like we could do an extra 50,000 in that year, so we did. This year, we've just budgeted, I think, a $50,000 transfer again because that's what we feel we can do this year.
Okay, so I was curious if we had any unusual expenditures?
Nope. There actually have been.
Like paying out of?
I don't know if we've actually paid anything out of this fund yet. If we have, it's been very minimal. This, 2017 would be the first year we have any kind of substantial expense in this fund.
So is that an existing policy, vacation time accrual limits? But some individuals have gone past that?
We suffered impermitted for a very long time.
Yes.
We have a significant liability.
And we are in the process of, well, Amy is in the process of rewriting all of our personnel policies and addressing policies that have been out of compliance for a while, and we're trying to clean things up.
Sort of lose it or use it or lose it scenario on that, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And we, since, since, the reason we're asking for the allowance to spend out of it was, is we essentially allowed people to overaccrue.
True, yeah, yeah.
And we put things in place to make sure that doesn't happen any longer, but since we allowed this, we're trying to be as compassionate as possible because they earned the.
I understand, yeah.
Okay, next we'll talk about the street fund. Street fund budget is just under 1.2 million for next year. Of that 1.2 million, 613,371 is our recurring revenues, and I have budgeted our expenditures at 613,000. So basically, our expenditures are what our expenditures are, and I've budgeted transfers in, in a slightly higher amount to make sure they're covered. The street fund realized almost entirely on the current expense fund for sustainability. There is one dedicated funding source for the street fund, and those are gas tax revenue, but it, it doesn't come close to paying for what our streets cost to maintain, so, and you'll see that here in a minute. I have basically recommended a six, an ending fund balance policy of 60 days of operations and maintenance costs. So that comes out to about $100,000. And this fund is budgeted to have an ending fund balance of about $119,000. So here's a look at our revenues in this fund. You can see the royal blue color is transfers. So the royal blue color is the amount that we transfer in from the current expense fund every year to sustain these operations. So for 2017, the proposed amount is 400,000. The green part of the pillars is our motor vehicle fuel tax. That is our one and only dedicated funding source for our streets right now, and it's budgeted to be just under two, or just over 200,000 next year. And then other is minimal at 2,500. I think that's for mostly generated through street permit revenue.
So, question.
Yeah.
Go back one. What are the, maybe, top two ideas you could suggest that we could add revenues to stabilize this, this fund for the streets?
Well, as far as operating, covering operating expenses goes.
Well, you know, just, just to give you a little background, we used to dedicate tax, I think it was utility taxes, like 50%. And what are some other options?
Um.
So that they know what to depend on rather than what we choose to transfer?
Mm-hmm. I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you, Larry, at this point. I do have some ideas for funding street capital, but I, I'm not sure about operating right now. I don't know if you want to time in on that at all, Mike, or?
Yeah, I mean, as far as some of that with the older fuel taxes, there have been some changes in Olympia on that where there will be a minor amount, some extra money coming in in coal tax. We had that happen, so that's one option. As far as newer revenue in this season with the street capital, one thing to consider over time is using something like a transportation fund that is for that, something to look at down the road, because this issue is not unique here. A lot of cities all over, where it's just they have the same thing.
But, yeah, and the idea behind that question was, is we used to give them dedicated sorts of revenue from other taxes that they could depend on. Then we chose to move back and see, I was just wondering what was wrong with the dedicated tax idea?
There's nothing wrong with it.
I realize we've given them more than they would have gotten, you know, so, so we chose to give it.
I think.
I just was curious if there's some way we could stabilize it so they'd know how to budget and know how to plan their street repairs and everything else?
Yeah, the problem with moving a tax revenue that's now current expense into street fund is enough, it, it doesn't really matter either way. It's really the same pot of money. I feel like the street fund is basically extend, an extension of our current expense fund because it is, two-thirds of it is funded by current expense every year. So whether that tax revenue actually stays in current expense or it, it goes into the street fund first, really, at this point, it's being transferred in anyway, so.
So my idea was, what would be wrong with a policy that we used to have? And what, what about telecommunication taxes, maybe 50% or something like that? Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's, these are things we needed to talk about in finance committee meetings, probably.
Okay, okay.
There are no bad ideas.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, just a quick look at expenditures and revenues in this fund over time. So this year, so normally, they're pretty, pretty even. You'll see that last year, our revenues with this blue line exceeded our expenditures by quite a bit, and that was because we had transferred money into this fund in anticipation of doing some capital projects that didn't come to fruition due to not receiving TIB funding last year. So we had transferred money into this fund, which boosted this revenue column, but then we didn't spend it. So we carried over that fund balance into, or we're carrying over that fund balance into 2017. And what's happening in 2017 is now you see the opposite effect. So our expenditures exceed our revenues. That's because we are now transferring that money for the capital projects from street fund into our street improvement fund where the capital will actually take place in '17. I hope I didn't lose it there.
Does everybody understand that?
I mean.
It says "Hymie." Yeah.
I just don't understand that one part. We didn't use it. Well, it was.
Thank goodness.
It was put aside, winging funding from the, from the state, and they didn't cooperate with us.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. So 613,000 in operating costs next year, a $300,000 transfer out of the street fund to the street improvement fund for capital projects, 175,000 being transferred out of the street fund for equipment replace, the equipment replacement program. And then we have budgeted for three FTEs in the street department, which is the same as 2016, and it is the same as what was requested, so no change there. Okay, criminal justice fund 120 and forfeited proceeds fund 121 are small special revenue funds that are statutory, statutorily required. When we receive, when we receive these revenues from the state, we are required to deposit them in isolated funds where they can be tracked. So we have these two funds for criminal justice and for forfeited proceeds. They have about $12,500 between the two of them annually, and they're restricted, these funds that come in are restricted to specific uses. So criminal justice is restricted to programs such as child abuse prevention, adverse child programs, domestic violence programs. And then forfeited proceeds is restricted to drug enforcement and related activities. And for 2017, the police department actually has not requested use of any of these funds. So what we will do between now and final budget is go back and have some discussions with the PD and see what we can do. We don't want, this, this money is intended to be received and spent annually. It's not intended to be just kind of stockpiled for a rainy day. So it's actually supposed to fund programs for these intended purposes. So between now and final budget, we will go back and talk to Sergeant Benfield about what we might be able to apply here to this fund, these two funds. The next three funds are debt service funds for our general obligation debt for the city. So this is our debt that is not related to like our water or wastewater utilities, but it's for general city stuff. So fund 201 is the Cars Project Debt Service Fund, and there's about $490,000 budgeted there for debt service. Fund 202 is for our fire engine that we purchased this year, and that is about $53,000 in debt service next year. And fund 235 is for our commercial drive development project, and that is $140,484. All of these funds are, they are funded through transfers in from the current expense fund. So current expense, actually, this Cars Project debt service amount is actually levied. This was part of the levy that you approved a couple of meetings ago. So we levy this through property taxes. It comes in, it's deposited in the current expense fund, and then it's transferred to this debt service fund for the actual payment of the loan. The fire engine and commercial drive, both of those, they don't have a dedicated funding source such as a levy, so they are just expenses out of the current expense fund. We have operated under an internal policy for a long time that I'd like to formalize as part of this financial policy package I'm putting together. But that internal policy, I'm sure you probably recall from years past, is that we always keep one year's worth of debt service in reserve for each of our liabilities. So for funds 202, which was the fire engine, and 235, which was commercial drive, we have one year of debt service in reserve, so not only the current year's payment, but also the next year's payment sitting there. Fund 201 for the Cars Project, we do not have a year's worth in reserve because, if you recall, these were bonds that were voted by the taxpayers as, the taxpayers gave the full faith that they would provide for the levy that pays this every year. So we feel like it's a really secure, we don't worry about this money coming in and having the money to pay this loan payment every year because we know the taxpayers are good for it. So we don't keep a half a million dollars in reserve for this one. Okay, next fund is, where is that fund? No, I don't. I don't think so. This is fund 301, not 320. Sorry about that. So the Street Capital Contribution Fund is a fund that we set up. It's actually mandated by state statute that if we receive mitigation funds or traffic impact fees from developers or from third parties, we have to deposit those in a specific fund where they're kept safe until they're actually used for their intended purpose. That's what this fund is. So everything that runs through this fund comes in from some kind of development activity in the community where they have, as part of the project, they have agreed to pay a certain amount towards mitigation for our streets or whatever happens to impact. So this fund has, for 2017. So this fund has, for 2017, approximately $115,000 that we're expecting to receive from Hayton Homes. This is the last amount for the Homestead Development. So the Phase 3 of Homestead will yield these mitigation funds to be used towards the Whitman and College Signalization, which we have already installed as part of the Cars Project. So when this money comes in, it will be deposited here and then it will be transferred to Fund 330. Why do I keep pushing the wrong button? Sorry, guys. It will be transferred to Fund 330 to reimburse signalization costs from the Cars Project that were already paid for.
So question.
Yeah.
Suppose we want to signalize wealth and large, where would we store funds?
It would be in the same fund, and in fact, there is some money in the balance of this fund. You remarked for that. When the school district rebuilt the elementary school, part of their process was to contribute to signalization at large in women. So there's six, it's not much. It's not going to go very far, but it will, at some point when we get to needing to signalize that intersection, we have a little bit of money there to put towards it.
Like 15 years ago?
It was actually, only a couple of years ago.
We've just had complaints there forever.
Yeah, we have, so...
So the $115, the Cars Project, I understand, in the merit of funding sources, would the $115 go to pay down a bond?
No, the $115 is actually budgeted into the project budget already because we knew we were going to be receiving it. So it's in addition to, it's not extra money. It's money we were planning on using to...
I see. Okay.
Aren't you spending?
Yeah. Okay, next fund is Fund 305, which is our REIT 1 fund, so real estate excise tax. This is a quarter percent tax on real estate sales, paid by the seller unless unpaid, then the buyer's responsible. We have budgeted $110,000 in REIT 1 revenue for 2017, and this can be used for any of the capital products on our capital facilities plan.
How about streets?
Yeah, as long as the street project is specifically mentioned in our capital facilities plan. So what I have done for 2017 in an effort to find dedicated funding sources for street projects, I have moved our chip seal program from the Street Fund into this REIT Fund because the chip seal program is on our six-year tip, our Transportation Improvement Plan. When we update our capital facilities plan, it will also include the chip seal program. By moving chip seal to this fund, we will have actually then going forward a dedicated funding source to take care of that program every year forever. So that is what I proposed in this fund for 2017, is the chip seal program. And then on a couple of our planned projects, we had city or local fund contribution amounts. So on the Fourth Street Academy Way overlay, it was $32,000 that the city was going to have to contribute in addition to all the grant funding and whatnot. And on Fourth Street sidewalk, so $70,000. So those local city portions, I have also budgeted to come out of REIT. Robert unfortunately had some news for us. I don't know if you want me to go into that one. We were not successful with our TIB funding on this sidewalk project for next year. We were successful on the overlay. So we also were not successful on the C Street reconstruction. So we've got some pretty big discussions to have, and there will be some significant rebudgeting between now and final budget as I pull some of those projects back out because we don't have the funding for them now, so...
The good news is we did get about $260,000 plus for the overlay on Fourth.
Yeah, we did, we did. The overlay is well-funded, yeah.
So it's not a grind and replace, it's an overlay?
It's a grind overlay, right?
If we grind, we won't have anything to replace, so we probably won't grind. It's very thin, right, Paul? The dilemma is that really we need to have sidewalks in before we put that in. So we have to figure out what we're going to do. We may have to, we may play with some, I don't know. That's a discussion we'll have.
Okay. So the next fund, 306, is new for this budget rendition. This would be a theoretical fund for REIT 2, if you guys want to move forward with that. I mentioned this at the last budget discussion we had in September. I was asked to bring it back forward with the preliminary budget, so that's what I've done. It's an additional quarter percent tax on real estate, so it's a second quarter tax, quarter percent tax. The only time this would impact our citizens is when they sell the property. It doesn't affect everyone in their everyday lives, so it's a fairly low-impact revenue source as far as the tax is concerned. One thing I do want to mention is that it's not only when real estate is sold, but if there's a transfer of a controlling interest of 50% or more in an entity that owns property in the city, then REIT is assessed at the time of that ownership transfer. So like, for example, I think it was two years ago, one of our large nursing homes had this happen. There was a transfer of their controlling interest, and we got a check for, I think it was $16,000 or $18,000 in REIT funding because they changed, their company changed controlling interest ownership, so kind of nice for us.
So do I understand correctly, each REIT 1 and 2 is worth about $200,000 each?
$100,000.
Oh, $100,000.
So the first quarter would be $100,000, and then the second quarter would be another $100,000.
Okay, so this 208 is combining both.
I'm not sure what you're looking at, I'm sorry.
The total in 305.
Oh. In 305?
We have money in there.
Yeah, so 305 is REIT 1.
That's just the funding balance? Yes. Okay.
Well, that is the total expenditures, but that includes ending fund balance because ending fund balance is considered an expenditure.
Got you.
So that's in 305, but this would be 306. If you flip the page and I have $100,000 there, that would be if we implemented this as part of the implementation of the 2017 budget, it was approved and we move forward in 2017. We had a full year of revenue, and I'm budgeting about $100,000 for that. So, there it goes. I budgeted $100,000. I did not put any expenditures in this fund because I didn't know if you guys were going to want to move forward with this or not. And even if you do, I think it would be wise to let the balance build up at least for a year or two in here before we start actually spending it on projects. So if you like this, I can bring back an ordinance. This is adoptable by ordinance, by City Council. It's very simple. I could bring that back with final budget if you want to leave this in. The nice thing about this is that it would provide $100,000 every year that we can put towards our streets that is $100,000 that either the Current Expense Fund doesn't have to support or it's $100,000 additional that we don't have right now that we could use.
So would the ordinance be included in the budget ordinance or just a supplement?
It would be a separate ordinance, but, yeah, so it would be a separate agenda item, but, yeah. Okay. So the next fund is the Street Improvement Fund. So this is the fund where I pulled all of our street capital products out of our Street Fund, and I've dumped them in this fund. So this is now where we will be paying for all of our projects that are related to streets. In this preliminary budget before, we had our not-such-good news from TIB. I had budgeted $1.4 million for the C Street reconstruction, then about $290,000 for the Fourth and Academy overlay, which they did fund, that product, and then about $730,000 for the sidewalk product. And as it says, this fund will, this fund budget will be significantly different next time you see it because of the funding issues. So we'll have to talk about how we're going to restructure those or move forward. Okay, next fund is 315, Facility Maintenance Reserve. This is a fund that was set up a few years ago to provide basically a savings account for large building maintenance capital projects. So for the City Hall Building, the Annex Building, and the Fire Station is what this fund is for. We haven't used this fund basically at all, but we did budget in 2016, we budgeted in 2016 to use some of it. One of those things is the City Hall roof, which is also on your agenda tonight. So the roof project may get done this year. In the chance that it doesn't, it is rebudgeted in here for next year because it is a project that needs to happen. So there is currently $75,000 in here for that next year. There's $17,000 budgeted for remodel in the Fire Department for their kitchen for the volunteers, which I have been told is in very sad shape.
It is in very sad shape.
Yeah, that's what I've heard. There's $75,000 in here for an HVAC system replacement in the City Hall Building, which also is in pretty bad shape. And then we've also budgeted $40,000 to move departments from the Annex into City Hall and the Police Department from City Hall out into the Annex. And that, I don't know if that has been brought forward at all. Okay, so in order to consolidate our police force all in one building so that it's a unified department, there's not really room to do that where our Police Department is over here right now. So we have had some discussions about strategy for solving that, and it looks like everyone's on board staff-wise with trying to move the Police Department completely out into the Annex Building. And then that would also facilitate, if we bring Public Works, Planning, Building Departments over here, it would facilitate customer service for our customers that come in to get a building permit. They have to go out there to fill out their paperwork, then they have to come over here to pay for it, and they have to go back over there to pick it up right now. So by swapping these all around, we're hoping that we have much better congruency and provide better service.
So the $40,000 will cover the remodel work that's needed?
It will cover minimal work that's needed. It would get departments moved long-term. We probably need to look at budgeting more than that for some remodel of the front of this building to facilitate customer service for the two departments. But this is a starting place. This would at least get some transition moving and get it.
Take a while.
Yeah.
Well, eventually we're going to have to hire an architect, redo the front end of this building as well as make sure that the combined Police Department is safe and secure.
So that $40,000 doesn't really cover any remodel work?
There's a little remodel work.
There's a little bit.
Not till it's needed, not a lot, just to get it going.
Just a bare minimum, just to get them switched for now.
But to open up the foyer out there would be a whole different expense.
Yes. So that's what we have budgeted here for next year. The next fund is actually Fund 320. And this is our, this is a new fund that I've set up for this budget year, and it's our Equipment Reserve Fund, which is the new fund for the Equipment Replacement Program that I've been talking about. So all of our large expensive equipment will now be funded out of this, it will be purchased out of this fund. So here's a look at the transfers that will be happening to this fund in 2017. And we've already gone over some of these, actually all of them. We've already talked about these, so this is redundant. But it does show that part of the transfer is going to be recurring every year. This is the funded depreciation portion. This is the part of the transfer that is the catch-up amount that we are behind by, that we need to do for the next couple of years to get caught up and be able to buy these things on schedule. So just know that this amount is not going to be forever, but this one will be. Yes.
Just a little history for the other council members. When I first came here, we had one, an Equipment Reserve Fund. And I think that it was dedicated per vehicle. Because what happened was, they had so much built up on the fire truck or another truck, they borrowed to pay for the fire truck. Am I remembering correctly, Paul?
Yeah, it never was fully funded, never was. But Water and Wastewater was trying to put money in for equipment, but I don't ever remember it being fully funded.
I just remember seeing an outlay of all the different vehicles that had built up per vehicle. And then money's being borrowed from those particular vehicles to pay for another one?
Yeah, we had a chart that showed an idea of what that should be. And then different people looked at that and said, "Well, I should have that much money," but there wasn't that much money there because that was just the way it should have been.
Streets were...
Had to have been fully funded and replaced.
So is it going to be detailed or is it just going to be general like this?
It's detailed.
It's very detailed.
It's, basically, Sarah's working with Paul, working with that, looking at the age of each vehicle, what we estimate the replacement cost for those vehicles are, looking at what a service life for those vehicles should be. And every vehicle that, that gets charged against every vehicle every year. So if the service life of one of the patrol vehicles for the Police Department is six years, and it's going to cost $60,000 to buy a new one, we're putting $10,000 a year against that vehicle.
So thanks for the explanation. I just never understood why it went away, and now it's coming back, you know? I was just trying to follow the logic.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was ever really fully implemented. I think there may be some ideas thrown around.
It was not it. Like I said, this is what it should be, and people saw that, and they thought they had that money, and they didn't.
I just remember we used to have that front in the budget, and then it just kind of went away.
Well, we're trying to catch up.
Good.
So that, Paul, how much is our new dump truck going to be?
The new dump truck is probably $125,000, $50,000 at minimum.
And so we're trying to make sure that when we finally get to that point, actually, we're at that point now, but when we need one, we'll be able to go and buy one without endangering somebody else's vehicles.
Okay. Moving forward, Economic Development Funds 330 and 340. Fund 330 is our Cars Project Fund, or it's been used to house the project for the last couple of years. The Cars Project will be substantially complete before this budget's implemented, but we do have some carryover costs budgeted into 2017 to provide for lingering expenditures. So a total of $180,000 for Cars expenditures, $60,000 for signage, $10,000 to complete our light poles and banner program, about $50,000 for construction, and about $60,000 for the final amounts that will pay our Keller and Associates, our construction engineers. And then Fund 330 will end with about $120,000 in it. And Fund 340 is a reserve fund for Fund 330, and it hasn't been used for years. There's like $65 in it that just sits there, so there's no activity budgeted there. Okay, Water Utility. Oh, I'm sorry.
The Cars Project. Have we received reimbursement from the Lowell University for that?
I think, I know we build them. I think, I know we build them. Did we receive it?
I'm pretty sure we have. We built the port, the first half.
The port for the, yeah. For the project or potential.
Correct. And then District 14 participated in the water, their water has paid. So I think, and I think we're either half-built or we'll be short in the second half of the port.
Yeah, I need to do that in the next week or two, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this is just a list of all the funds that our Water Utility consists of. So you can see it's not just one water fund. It's the water fund, it's capital funds, it's debt service funds. There's a whole, whole host of them there. But I just wanted to list them so that you guys can see, there's a lot going on here. Notable items for the Water Utility next year. We're implementing that financial plan that we went through the painful process of creating this year, which was the effort, the joint effort with FCS Group and RH2 and city staff. And that says city finance staff, but it's also engineering, it was also public work. So I should just say city staff. So anyway, we're implementing, implementing the plan that that project laid forth for our financial health. It'll be the first year of the three-year of approved water rate increases. So the combined increase for 2017 that's in this budget is 12.88%. In the budget is the planned $100,000 worth of refunded capital transfers. So that, that will be transferred from the operating fund where it's received in with rates, with rate revenue, it'll be transferred to a water capital fund. We also have the Equipment Replacement Reserve Program. Water is participating in its own portion of that. So $54,000 in transfers for that in '17. And then the Minimum Operating Fund Ending Balance Policy Implementation. Again, this one is going to be 60 days O and M, that's industry standard, that's what FCS Group recommended. That comes out to $185,000. And our budgeted ending fund balance in water is $524,000 for this year. That budgeted ending fund balance is scheduled to decline over time. So you'll see that in future years. Okay. Water Utility has budgeted for 4.25 FTEs. We had three actual in 2016. Just to give you a little history, until 2014, the utility had five and a half FTEs. We lost a couple through attrition. And we've been actually, while we've only had three FTEs, we've been paying for temporary labor in the busy months for the last two years on contract with express personnel. What we're proposing for next year is to get rid of that temp labor and actually replace 1.25 FTEs. Well, replace one of the FTEs we lost and then the .25 is basically replacing the temp labor. And this was figured into the financial plan for the utility. So this is all completely covered within that plan. Another notable item for the water fund, again, just like all the other, it's the current expense fund and the street fund. Same with water, I've moved capital products out of the operating fund 400 and put it in a specific capital fund so that we can track and isolate value. Okay. So Fund 400 is our operating fund for water. So I'm gonna be talking about that fund here. Our recurring revenues are $1,060,000. Recurring expenses are $1,125,000. So that's kind of upside down by about $64,000. But that is intentional, that is according to our plan. And that will be covered by the spend-down and fund balance over the next few years. So by the time we get out to the end of six years, as rate increases have been implemented and costs have continued to be controlled, that will reverse and it will be a net, a net zero. So recurring revenues and expenses will be equal at that point. This is a quick look at the major revenue sources for the Water Utility. So the red is charges for goods and services, so that's primarily going, going to be your water sales. The green is debt service collections, so the debt portion of the rate revenue. And then the yellow is our water connection fees, so that's new connection fees. So this just kind of gives you a quick look at what's happened over time. We're budgeting all three of those revenue sources to be at about $1.8 million next year. Expenses for the water fund. Of course, this looks a little funny because that's year-to-date, it's not a full year. We're expecting that to come in around $1,010,000, give or take. And then next year it's a little bit higher at $1,162,000. And that is a little bit higher because that includes the $100,000 rate funded capital transfer. That's considered an expenses fund, so $100,000 of that is being transferred into a capital fund to be saved for capital later. And then the $54,000 in Equipment Reserve transfers. So it's really, it looks like it's more, but those two items are what are making up the difference. This is just a list of projects that we have budgeted. We haven't heard yet on our DOH loan, but we are budgeting the full $3 million we applied for, for work on that project this year. We're budgeting for utility pickup for the water fund. And then all of these items were detailed out when we did all of the discussion on the rates, water rates earlier this year. So annual high priority replacements, investigating well number two with its lifting off the base, distribution facility replacements, the C Street water improvements, which now will be pulled back out. And then some water meter replacements.
So can we move back?
Yeah.
Pointing out, this C Street, that was our side, that was our side of the funding, correct? Our, our portion of the funding.
Yeah, we don't, so we are fully responsible for the utility portion of that. There was no grant money to supplement that, so this was going to be.
So pulling that out, how does that affect your fund balance? That, I mean, is it straightforward?
Well, it'll increase the fund balance by that amount for next year. But basically, we're just saving it so that we can rebudget it maybe in 2018.
So the $3 million, heaven forbid, we do not get that. That is a, that would also go back into fund balance, is that correct?
Well, that's an in and an out because if we, actually, I don't know how I would fund the well project if we didn't.
We would probably, we would have to do that project, really, one way or another. Whether, I mean, it would be, we've gotta do it. It's, there's too much risk out there as far as the water supply. We would probably not end up doing the blue line part. And we might have to find a different site, which we do have other sites we can go to. So we're probably looking more like 2.2, 1.8 to 2.2 million dollars for that. We'd have to find it, so.
We would have to rework that financial plan a little bit. The water rate financial plan.
But you've, I'm sorry, you've funded the three, if it comes in a 2 point less.
Well, the $3 million is funded by the DOH loan.
I got it.
So if we don't get the loan, then the funding side is gone, but the expense side is still there.
I understand, I got it.
Yeah. So we'll see what happens with that.
Yeah.
We need to keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, yeah. You knock on wood or something.
Do we know when we're gonna hear back about that loan?
I think in December.
Should be this next month or the latest year, that's kind of what we've been told.
Christmas wishes, then.
Yeah.
So this is just a slide, just showing you the $3 million from Department of Health. That was one way we were gonna fund capital that we hopefully still will. And then the issuance of a $2 million revenue bond for putting towards a little of that, all, pretty much all of the other projects that we had listed there. And both of those are within that financial plan that we've laid out. So they're all provided for with our rate structure. Okay, debt service for the water fund, I'm not gonna talk about this in detail. I'm just gonna tell you that in total, we have about $750,000 in debt service for the utility next year. We do have one full year's worth of debt service for all of these loans in reserve. So just for your information. Okay, wastewater. Again, a list of the funds that the wastewater utility encompasses. Just a few things to note, this 2017 will be our first full year of having CH2M operate the utility, or the wastewater treatment plant. I want you to know that this budget, the way it's written right now, has an automatic 5% increase in the operating base rate as of January 1st, which comes out to $1.24 a month per account. This utility is struggling as the water utility was, was struggling. So we have some work to do financially in this fund. And this is something of a stopgap to just try to stop the bleeding a little bit until we can get a really permanent plan in place. As part of CH2M's contract next year, we are having them take over the poplar farm management. And Paul, can you give them just a little?
I, I would say, I would say rather than just the poplar farm, it'll be, they'll be managing the whole farm. They gotta put the effluent on, they need to be able to coordinate with the farmer and with the tree, tree people and so forth. So it would be everything. We're looking at trying to harvest the poplar trees, but the one that we thought we were gonna have fell through. So we've got some other contacts that we're gonna make to see if we can get that, get that going. Then, then they can decide whether they want poplars back or whether they want farmer to, whatever will work to manage their, their levels to maintain the environment.
Thank you. Okay, other, a couple other large, large items in this budget next year. We are scheduled to start our wastewater facility plan amendment. That's going to be about a quarter million dollars. So that's budgeted next year. And then, again, the wastewater utility is participating in the Equipment Replacement Program. So their contributions next year will be about $135,000. Okay. We've also budgeted to have a wastewater utility rate study conducted next year, similar to the water study we had this year. I have segregated connection fee revenue out, I've taken it out of our operating fund and it's going to be deposited straight into a capital fund next year to help pay for capital projects as it should, instead of being used to cover operations, which is how we have been operating. And we are pulling capital projects out of the operating fund, segregating them in their own capital fund, similar to all the rest of the city next year. Minimum operating fund ending balance recommendation is 60 days O and M, which should be $280,000. Our budgeted ending fund balance is $315,000. Okay, recurring, this kind of gives you a little bit of an idea why we're, you know, how we're struggling here. Recurring operating revenues are $1.672. Recurring expenses are $1.7 million. So we're at, you know, $45,000 negative next year. And that's after putting the 5% stopgap in as of the first of the year. So on the O and M base.
Quick question?
Yeah.
Does your professional services line here take care of the contract for the operation?
Is it the million-plus-dollar line? Yes, that's what we, that's what we plan to pay CH2M.
If it's not spread out throughout that expenditure budget?
It's just all put in one budget line in operating funds.
So that we can know that there's a direct connection?
Yes. Very easy to track it that way. Okay, so what are our concerns with this utility? Obviously, that recurring expenses exceed the revenues. Also, in the short time that CH2M has been operating our plant, they have identified over $2.5 million worth of deficient infrastructure that we need to be planning for. We've started, the, started working towards that with this budget. There's some items that we have budgeted to replace, but it's, we don't have the money to replace all of them, which is why we really need to do a rate study and figure out where we're going. We need a long-term financial plan for this utility, so.
I have a question about, can you move back, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Question about CH2M. They've been responsive, I know there's paperwork that needs to be filled out, response to the state on questions and whatnot, so far.
I think they're, they're responsive. You know, we've, the biggest thing was the capital issue, capital projects, inventory and review analysis. We've got that, we wanted a little bit more detailed, but we're working on that.
If I remember though correctly, the other issue was, what, our response to the state if there was an issue with that plan out there, correct, or?
Well, they, they have assumed liability for the operation of the plan.
Yeah.
Now, they, they, that's where they come in, they give us recommendations that they see as deficiencies. And then we gotta respond in a reasonable kind of way, or then we assume all the liability, you know? So.
Thanks.
Okay, here's just a quick look at our major revenues in this fund. Green is basically charges for sewer service. Blue is the debt collection and connection charges are yellows. So this just shows you, we've actually had an interesting trend in, it's, it's a little difficult to see here, but 2012, 13 and 14, 2012 and 13, our, our charges for sewer service were actually higher than 2014 and 15. So people are, and we looked at the detail behind this this morning. People are being more frugal with their water usage during the period of time that we measure to charge for sewer flow for the next year. So they've caught on and they have decreased their usage. It's actually a trend, so. And at, at the same time, we've, obviously, we've been adding connections. So, you know, our yellow bars have gotten thicker in the last few years, but usage charges have gone down, so. Conservation is not good for business, it's good for the environment. Anyway, it's, it's a challenge. Okay, wastewater expenses, there's just a picture of those for you. The $2,000, $2,78,000 we have budgeted for 2017, again, includes a couple of large items, which is why it's so much higher. Includes the $135,000 in transfers to Equipment Reserve, which part of that will be recurring, part of it is just catch-up. And then $250,000 for the Water System Plan Amendment. Okay, this is just a quick look at some capital projects we budgeted for for wastewater. We have a stormwater system plan in there that is an upcoming requirement. We have budgeted the C Street. We have budgeted the C Street wastewater infrastructure, which that will no longer be in there. Replacing a flatbed truck at the wastewater treatment plant. The UV disinfection upgrade, this is something you guys already approved, and we've made a down payment on it, and this is the balance that we will owe in 2017. And then, another $360,000, $4,000 for capital needs that CH2M can...they're prioritizing that. And what they tell us we need to spend on first is what we will spend on first, so... Okay, funding for the capital. We have close to a half million dollars in fund balance, which part of that will be spent. Then, we have an excess in our wastewater debt service fund right now of about $470,000 that I can transfer, which I have budgeted to transfer from the debt service fund into the capital fund to use for capital equipment, which is what it's actually intended for. Then, our connection charge revenue of about $105,000 will go towards capital. And then, we do have a stormwater planning grant of about $80,000 that will offset the cost of that project. Debt service, again, we meet the one-year's worth of debt service in reserve internal policy. And we have about $683,000 total in debt service for the utility for 2017.
A question, who will be doing the wastewater rate study? Who will be this?
Well, we'll put out an RFP, but I expect we'll probably end up going with FCS Group again, because they have a lot of our data already from doing the water study, and I think they're scoring efficiency with them. We are on the home stretch, guys. Hang with me for just a couple more minutes. Okay, APTS, this program is discontinued. There's no activity in here. Basically, I'm just budgeting to close this out next year, and it'll be gone. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. Our ER and R fund, this fund is fully funded by transfers in from all of the other funds that utilize its services. So, this is our shop, our city shop. Our mechanic is in this fund, and all of the work on our city equipment happens here. So, as departments use the services of this fund, they then reimburse this fund. And that's how it's...that's how the budget works in here. I'm proposing a minimum ending fund balance in this fund, but also 60 days O&amp;M, which is about $50,000. And we're budgeting to have about $93,000 in here. This is just a little look at revenues and expenditures over time in this fund. Blue is revenue, red is expenditure. You can see that in the past three...well, the past two years and then the budgeted year, expenditures exceed revenues, and that is because we had a buildup of some fund balance in here, and we've been slowly spending it down. I'm spending it down until we get a little bit closer to that minimum 60 days. We really don't need more than that in this fund, so that's what's going on. And there's just a note about that. Okay, well, the last fund is our flexible spending fund. This is just a fiduciary trust fund where employees' contributions for their flex spending accounts are deposited, and then, as flex accounts are used, then the money's withdrawn back out. And the in-and-outs in here are about $17,000 for next year. And then, here's just a recap. Basically, it all boils down to we're spending down about just under a million dollars. This budget does a lot. I mean, there's...I'm sure you're probably...you're probably toast like me right now, so...anyway, that's what I have for you.
Quick question, the Conus Park renovation.
That was in the current expense fund.
For 2016?
Yes, it was budgeted in 2016, and it's rebudgeted for the rest of it in 2017.
Okay.
That is the only...I think that's the only capital project that's still in an operating fund, just because we started it there, so I wanted to finish it there.
And the assumption is we're going to be able to finish that off in 2017?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give congratulations to Sarah and all the staff, because this is not just planning a budget for next year, it's also revamping how we do our budget, and it's going to make it a lot more professional, a lot more easy to track, and I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo what she's saying is, this is the nuts and bolts, really, of the vehicle. And it's really nice to break down, because this is the most important thing you'll do all year, is look at the parts of the vehicle and just how they operate, how they're funded, and what they cost and everything. A few weeks ago, I requested a list of unusual contracts, and I'd like to see that sometime between now and the committee meeting. I can think of three right off, maybe the study to do, the study of the police department, see if it was understaffed. I never did see that contract, so I don't know how much it cost. And so, then another one was the proppant, so if there's any more like that happen to the list, so I can see what the unusual expenditures were, just from CE, not from the water or...
Okay. What I have is a list of...what I keep during the year is a spreadsheet of expenditures that weren't originally in the budget, but that we brought to you and council approved, or that were maybe below the administrator's authority, and we went ahead and...he went ahead and approved it.
Yeah.
It might not have come to you, but I do have a list of all of those types of items. Is that what you're looking for?
I just like...yeah, I'd like a list of what the contracts were in the total, you know, how much extra we spent on unusual studies and...
That police study that you're talking about was actually free of charge done by our insurance company.
Oh.
So, there was no cost to that, to the city. Just because I specifically know the answer to that, and I'm just like, if you know what that is.
That's nice to know.
But yeah, I can...I have that for you, Larry.
Okay.
I'm sorry I haven't had time to provide it.
Because if there's any other ones, I can't think of what they might be, you know.
I'll give you a list of what I kept track of throughout the year, and...
I'd just like to know what the extra expenditures are from the year that aren't normal.
I'll have that finance committee for you.
As Sarah noted, she is now tracking the recurring and non-recurring expenses as part of the budget process, so that we have a much better idea of where we're going to invest it and come down with.
So, if we're ready to open the public hearing, we can do that.
Are there any other questions for the council? Well, I just have one. Council members? And that is, if the public...I think the preliminary budget is required to be available to the public.
It is.
Like, is it 60 days prior to January 1st, or... So, my question is, how are we supposed to expect comments if they don't have the budget to study to look at?
Well, they can come in and request it. I mean, it's...I have extra copies that are available to anyone who wants it to come in and get one.
Yeah, and so, we could have had copies too?
I...this literally just got put together.
Okay, so, from today forward, they can read...they can look at it?
And I apologize for it being late this year.
Well, actually, it's...there's no reason for Sarah to apologize. Like I said, I'm...this lies directly on me. I wanted to make sure that we did this right, within the resources that we have available. I think this is really a complete document. Mea culpa. And I think somebody can beat me up later.
I'll see you out back, Harvey.
So, with that...
I just wanted to add something as well. Everything that we presented at the city council meetings, including their budget, since I've been here, we've been throwing the agenda packets up on the website. It'll be a lot more easier to find with the new website, but for now, we're working with what we have. So, we'll make sure this ends up on a budget section. The packet itself is segregated in the agenda packet section.
So, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing for review of the preliminary budget and comment. Anyone wishing to comment or have questions on the preliminary budget, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, second time, anybody wishing to testify to the Cal State City Council on the preliminary budget presentation, please step forward, state your name and address. One final time, anyone wishing to testify before the Cal State City Council on the preliminary budget presentation, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I would accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seen as signed? Closed, we are going to skip the debates streets. We have four action items. Mr. Zappala.
Thank you. This agenda item, the 4U item number one, is just a resolution to join the National Joint Powers Alliance. It's basically, it's across the country. It's a national governmental purchasing cooperative. I view it as another purchasing item within the toolbox of purchasing to try to get lower cost on items. They sell things from pens and pencils to asphalt and public works items. Why is over in Colfax, we use this very successfully to do some public works projects and get a lower cost amount. So, this is just a resolution to join NJPA. There's no cost, no obligation. And cities across the country have been joining this. Colfax was the most recent one in Washington, but there were many others. So, that's why this is brought before you today.
I like that, no cost, no obligation, no liability, and I'd like to move that we approve Resilient 893 authorization, and there's a sign of drug exercise.
All right, well, seconded. It moved and seconded. Any comments for the questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seen as signed? Passing unanimously. Item two, take the management.
We've got backup. This is a request for a contract with the State of Washington that is actually involved with the Department of Defense equipment, that surplus. And what we're doing is, the items that we're looking to obtain this year and next year, that are pretty expensive, we can throw the Department of Defense through this program at just freight cost. But there is an initial cost of getting into the program. We've got $200 this year and possibly $400 for next year. We take our sites for our firearms, new rifles, and other equipment. There are like safety equipment we make for the vehicle and basically just paid for freight. We're up with the freight helicopters, or... They would chuck that turn on a great...
No tanks either.
Okay. All items.
Any questions?
It goes in conjunction with the city ministry, it's another way of purchasing that we can get things at pretty much a free price, rather than going out paying full price retail for it. Most of it is used equipment, but we give it some free in the research.
I know this is very minimal cost, but there's no fund information listed, so where is that coming from?
It would just be for more items. And so, and WOOP uses this quite a bit, and we used to use it before with lots of AR-15s. And so, something we want to get back into again.
Other questions?
So, this would be separate from a policy we used to use where you piggyback onto other agencies like the county that's buying some similar equipment?
This is different.
This is different.
It's basically a contract between the Department of Defense and the city.
And it keeps us like a...we have to request things and actually justify that we can take the equipment from them first, and then, also, the contractors for us to keep it inventoried and keep track of items, and it's just a long process for it.
I move that we authorize the police chief to enter into the agreement to enable the police department to obtain surplus from the Department of Defense. Item number two. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seen as signed?
I'd like to thank the police department with what's happening across the country with the police officers. We're really thankful for you. We really appreciate you.
Item number three, Mr. Wolman.
Good evening. As was mentioned earlier, this specific roof is a roof for this building, a 25-year-old roof that has experienced several repairs due to wind damage, ice damage, this kind of thing. I'm seeking for a really long-life roof to minimize future labor costs. That's why I'm going to the steel. This budget has $150,000 left, so we'll be spending down half, but we'll still have half in that reserve. Still be $75,000 for next year, and that's some issues with HDAC for 17. Any questions?
I meant to draw it by in daylight, but remind me, is this the original roof and it's metal?
No, this is just three tabs.
Oh, so you're going to put...
Yeah, it's overlaying metal.
What color?
We're trying to match as close as possible something that will blend. We have not given them a color. If you want to be involved in that, have to...
Just so we don't have to repaint the tanks?
We don't want to get any fights going, or something.
No fuchsia, please.
No, just as we're trying, they have indicated, I've had three different people look at it, and they indicated our gutter is adequate the way it is, so we're going to be trying to get something that will either blend with the gutter or will be a nice contrast.
Just to catch the council up on the humor here, we spent an extra, what, $15,000 to repaint our water tanks because the neighbors didn't like the color. So, color does matter. Any questions for...any other questions for Mr. Wolman? Councilmember Bobbitt, this may be a first since I've been here.
I see that there's a 35-year no fade warranty on it. How long do you expect this roof to last?
I wouldn't be surprised to see 60-year roof on it. This stuff, and if it were, you know, impacted by hail, then that would be an insurance settlement, which of course we would participate in. But other than hail, you just don't see a lot of failures with this kind of roof. And we typically do not have that kind of hail around here. We did it around here in Colorado, but we don't here.
Was Elson the roller later?
Yes.
They're excellent.
My high end was 140.
Besides we get the sales tax.
So, I would move that we authorize the expenditure for replacement of the municipal roof.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seen as signed? Passing unanimously. Number four, Mr. Gordon.
I believe this is the last of the items for the evening, so I'm going to be quick, and as many other questions, snap. If you recall, we have a... That's having significant issues that we're looking at a $3 million grant from... looking at a $3 million grant from Hart and Howell, a loan that will be forgiven, hopefully, if everything works out. But we also have another well, and that's the one that's raising up off its forehead. You saw Sarah, that's presented the $50,000 line out in the budget there, if you recall that. What this does, this allows us to go out for an RFP to request engineering firms to give us proposals, to take a look at it, to make sure that we're doing our diligence before we go out and move this in. The backstory to this is, is that we're also talking to our legislative advocate, our lobbyist, Dave Masson, and he's gonna be putting out on our behalf a legislative request about $900,000 for well number one. However, we are gonna caveat that and ask for, and let them know, we're gonna be coming back to the till, possibly, almost for sure, for well number two as well. So we're really setting the groundwork for that legislative request in the future, because we're expecting to see maybe some assistance there as well. So what this does is it just asks for your approval to go out for a request for proposals. Once we sit down with the engineering firm that we select, we'll come back to you with what they propose for their services.
Paul, is this my well? Is this my well?
The well number two study is for, well number two is the one that was at the back of your place, yes.
This is Ms., this is council member, not his fault.
I would like to make the motion then, to authorize the staff to prepare and issue a request for proposals to assess and recommend options for well number two.
Second.
On Fourth Street.
Other question? Which wall failed? Is it failed? Well, number...
This, well number one's failed, it's out of commission. Well number two is the one doing the...
Left.
And we're also concerned, actually, too, that if we were to pull the impellers on that well, we'd not get them back down just like well number one. So they're having issues with that one as well.
So two is over on Sixth?
Yeah, that's right.
No, two is off Four.
Four. I wondered where you lived, Marge. I thought you lived down the...
She used to live.
That was my well.
Then you should take care of it, Marge.
If I still live there, I'm...
Yes, okay. Gotcha.
I took care of it while I...
I think this is a really good move, Robert, because I've been wanting to see a study, because we haven't really known. It's kind of been a mystery to us, you know, but if we could see an engineering study, what the problem is and what the solution is, and look at that report, that's what I'd really like.
Item three.
I think we go to require the...
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously. For just a few, was that two things that we're giving an update on, as, well, you probably don't know, Larry Dickerson, our interim chief, his last date was last Friday, the 18th. Chief Dickerson recommended, I believe it's an appropriate choice to appoint, sorry, Benfield is our interim chief, will be entering into an agreement, he's, 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 he has loosely accepted that. But will be entering into an agreement with the, sorry, Benfield, appropriately renew anything in for his services for his extra expenses as the chief. And we are, the Proffman is scheduled to close out the application process with the chief on Fourth December, and given past history, I would expect that we would be entering probably right after the first, given what happens over Christmas, and a little, and then from there. The second item is some strategic planning. Both Mr. Rosatello and I have talked with at least one consultant, looking to talk to a couple to set up some strategic planning after the first of the year with some survey work, and then off-site with you all to, to talk about where you'd like to take the city over the next year, and then follow on with, now, don't laugh.
She's laughing at me, don't worry.
And then follow on with, with some work with the staff on taking the guidance and moving it forward. Any items for the council to discuss?
Have a street update? In, I mean, that street?
That is...
You had, you've been, you've been...
The paving's done, they're raising some valves, so they've done most of the valve raising, manhole raising, but the street's done, striping's done, they're working hard on the sidewalks. They've got full sidewalks pretty much done for the walking path all the way along. Now they gotta come back and do bases for the lights and the tree rates from Fourth Street to the end of the project. So there should be done by, by contract by about the first week of December. They'll be closed, they'll get substantial completion, and then they got a number. Once they get substantial completion, we give them a list of what's required to do, finish the job. They, they provide us a timeline, we accept or modify it, and then from that point, they got that time to finish. And if they exceed that, then it's a...
We can use, the asphalt's down with the, with the temperature and the weather. A concrete can be, what, poured when it's freezing, right?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, yeah, so, yeah. Good.
I'm hearing a lot of comments, compliments, in regards to their life, what they see.
Oh, yeah.
So it's pretty nice, it's nice to have it open.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Just a question, you know, so we can have something to think about regarding the complaint from the lady from Limontry. Do we have street standards adopted, or how is the striping determined? Was that a plan that was adopted by the council, this whole car project plan? Was that street and lane widths and everything, was that all the plan?
That was done through the engineering firm, Keller. They, they reviewed the, the plan, then it was reviewed by staff, Robert can comment too. Ultimately, the plans came to council and they adopted the plans and that.
To your point, I, I actually would like, I don't know what, what the correct process venue, but to discuss the striping and the turn lanes.
So, so there's, there's a little history in that Mr. Dyle came to the council on March 14th of this year, along with the owner of the Empire, and expressed concern because they'd seen the, the plans for the turn, the left turn lanes, as well as the reduction in on-street parking. Council is then briefed by, by both Mr. Gordon and Mr. Ray on the 28th about the rationale behind the design, in particular of South College, and that, and that those, the left turn lanes, and I guess I should let you do the zero referral, but the left turn, the left turn lanes were there so that traffic would continue to flow, because there's actually more surface traffic on College Avenue than there is on My River Road. So that, the left turn lanes were designed because of the crossing intersections here on South College, to eliminate backing up either people trying to make a left turn, because we've done a road diet and we were gone, we've gone down to a two-lane road, to prevent backing up behind someone making a left turn, and then backing up from the cross streets, waiting for people to turn because of the, the both north-south traffic going on College. The, at, at that time, at the 28th, listening to the tape at that time, essentially, there was a, there was a briefing, and the council, no action resulted in nothing happening with the plan, which basically was there was a briefing and then no determination was made on whether to press forward with the redesign or not, but it is fine.
We have what we have here, and I think we have to let it continue until the project is complete. Is that my...
That's, that is correct.
That's correct. But we also need to be able to, you know, I, to reevaluate it.
I would, I, I, there's, I think there's, I think there's a couple issues involved. One of those is that, I mean, until, until, until all the eyes are dotted and the tings crossed, we really, we really have what we've got. The other piece of that is, is that there's, there's validity in the concerns around on-street parking and the effect that that has on the business along South College. That, and that and the grand precourse that, that is South College now. As you may know, I have a new, I have a new Buick Fiat, which is great fun to drive. My wife's Subaru, on the other hand, is hot.
It does, it does control your speed.
Yeah, it does. So, so, you know, I, we do have, we do have, I think, a responsibility to, to look at in the long term and the effects of that. Restriping would be, in, would be fairly expensive.
Just a little, just to kind of clear on what, what the mayor's mentioned here, is we, on that, on that, if that helps me, we actually did a fairly thorough review and actually laid out some of the options. And really what you're seeing is a compromise between traffic and parking. And so we ended up with leaving parking in certain areas, but trying to approach and keep making traffic work at the intersection. So it's a compromise. And so there have been impacts, and we brought that out, and in fact, I think we even showed, in particular, the Empire and this particular business have areas for parking right behind their own facilities, if you recall that presentation? So we've been through that process. I was trying to recollect on a statement about the parking stall, there is one stall, is that recollect? It's not right in front of them, I think it's 90 feet down from them, and they wanted it right in front of their, their business, which would make it easier for their folks to get out, happens to be very close to the turn line there, so it becomes difficult. So what we relayed to them was, is actually, there's no reason and there's no law that says you cannot, that you can't unload there. You can still unload exactly where you were before, it's not preferable, you know, and maybe the folks that come in there to unload are not comfortable doing it, but we can't stop you. So that's, that's where we left it with them. So they can still do that if they want. I think they get a lot of their client job from Regency, and I don't think, I don't know if they would be comfortable doing it there, any event.
I can almost, I can almost guarantee you that Regency will not park in the, in the spot that's not designated.
I, I, yeah, you know, parking originally was the concern, but, but as, you know, we need to let this thing sit on the back burner and cook here a bit and see how it looks after a while, but, I don't, you know, I'm not in any hurry, but almost parking for me is almost a secondary to, we have, we're now experiencing what it looks like, and I'm finding myself in the wrong lane, crossing yellow, double yellows, and these, trying to just get down the south end here, and so it's something that, you know, I just want, we'll probably discuss it at some point in the future.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, and there's, I think there's some things that we can work with, with the Diles on, how to mitigate some of their concerns.
Just one additional short question. This is why I get called for the most, and I don't have an answer, and I thought I'd push it. Now, over the years, starting from, oh, 2004, we were always told that College Avenue, because of the width between the curbs, was eventually made to accommodate four lanes because of community group. What was the rationale behind narrowing the street? So that it's narrower than any of our other arterials, a large street, 12th, and so forth?
No, that's a good question. The answer to that really goes back to the Flatiron Access, where we have limited right away, right now. Obviously, we're not gonna buy all the buildings on either side, but council made a decision, I don't know how many years ago, to try and develop that downtown corridor look, which included the wider sidewalks. So we essentially lost a lane, because we, both sides were kind of punched in another four feet. So it's not exactly a full lane, but it's pretty close to it. So that's one of the reasons why, again, it's not, even, even with the striping aside, we still are getting a much narrower, not much, but a somewhat narrower corridor. So that kind of exacerbates the issue.
Though some of the lanes are 10 feet.
Right, right, they're fairly narrow.
Then, you know, you have to have those wider sidewalks. If you're, if you're gonna have those lights and move them in, or you'd have them, you'd have them basing where people are walking, or, or close to it. And so, yeah, I mean, it looks...
And part of the concept, I'm not the planner, but part of the concept is this makes something pretty and beautiful and attractive that people are comfortable on. Downside is, we lost some of our right away, and so, that's that balance between pedestrian and between traffic and between parking, which maybe that's a conversation too later we need to have, and then the long-term parking plans for the city.
No. Thanks.
Thank you. So one comment I have is that the, the speed, she was a little bit concerned about with the 30 miles an hour being somewhat uncomfortable speed for, for her. As a, as a driver, I do feel like 30 miles an hour is perhaps a bit fast with more narrow roads, and also with kind of weaving back and forth as the turn lanes have gone on. So is there any considerations for changing that corridor at this time, to reducing it to say 25?
Right. We don't wanna do anything now until the project is complete and the feds have reviewed the project so that it's in compliance with what was approved by the feds. Out of that, I would anticipate that we go back down to a 25 mile per hour.
Okay.
And get rid of the 30 mile on our side.
Just a little history on that that I learned from Paul years ago, is the reason why 12th Street, Fourth Street, and College Avenue got changed to 30 miles an hour is because some council member made a motion and they all passed it.